I call this committee of the whole meeting to order. All councilors are present this evening. We will start with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight is the third of three public hearings the council is required to hold on the city's operating budget to consider amendments and/or committee substitutes. No live public comment will be taken on the city's operating budget legislation, which is R 25132. However, live public comment will be taken on the objectives legislation, R 25153. At the end of tonight's meeting, the budget as amended and/or substituted will be sent to the Monday, May 19th City Council Meeting for adoption. Live public comment and written comments will be accepted at the May 19th Council Meeting. Members of the public, city staff, and the media have the ability to view this meeting in person and on live streams through four different platforms: GovTV on Comcast Channel 16, the GovTV website, YouTube, and Zoom webinar. The live streams can be accessed from most smartphones, tablets, or computers. Also, this meeting is closed captioned, and you may enable the closed captioning services on your television or device at this time. The video recordings of this meeting will also remain available for viewing at any time on the city council's website. Council staff is available via telephone if members of the public need assistance finding the videos online. Please call 505-768-3100 for assistance during business hours, which are Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. Members of the public have the opportunity to address the committee if they have signed up for public comment for R 153 per the rules published we have on the agenda and on our website on Friday. We will now move to public comment. Here are the public comment ground rules. Each participant has two minutes to present. Comments are to be addressed to the councilors only, and any disruptive conduct will result in removal from the meeting. Mr. Cornelius, please call the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker is Tom Guralnick, followed by Teresa Garcia. Teresa Garcia. Perhaps they have not arrived yet, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We will now move on to the agenda, item A, R 132. R 132 is appropriating funds for operating the government of the city of Albuquerque for fiscal year 2026, beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, adjusting fiscal year 2025 appropriations, and appropriating capital funds. I need a move. I move a due pass.
Second?
Okay, we have a second from Counselor Feeblecorn. I would like to now move the committee substitute. It is in your iPads. It's also on the dais. Okay, we have a second from Counselor Vice President, Counselor Penya. So now do I just go to the amendments? We have to vote on the committee sub? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the committee sub, raise your hand and say aye. And opposed? Okay. Now we'll go, that passes, and so now we'll go to the amendments in your iPad and on your dais. Let's see, our first amendment, committee amendment number one, Counselor Basson.
Madam Chair, I would like to move committee amendment number one, marked A, in your documents. There is, on page four, line 31, entitled Purchasing Program Decrease the Amount by $161,000. On page six, line one, entitled Design Recovered CIP Decrease the Amount by $132,000. On page six, line three, entitled Real Property Decrease the Amount by $138,000. On page six, line 13, entitled Office of the City Clerk Decrease the Amount by $147,000. On page seven, line 10, entitled Professional Accountability Decrease the Amount by $535,000. And on page five, line 29, entitled Legal Services Increase the Amount by $1,113,000. This is to reallocate general fund appropriations for attorneys from multiple departments into the legal department.
Okay, we have moved and seconded by Counselor Penya. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of committee amendment number one, say aye and raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay. Amendment B in our iPads and on the dais as amendment number two. This amendment is a, corrects the inclusion of an additional 2% COLA that was added on top of total compensation, which already included the 2% COLA. This is like a cleanup. We need a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second from Counselor Feeblecorn. Any questions? Okay. Counselor Basson.
Madam Chair, so this is just, it was a duplication, and we're undoing the duplicate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of amendment number two, say yes and raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to amendment C, Counselor Basson and Feeblecorn. Amendment number three.
Madam Chair, amendment number three, I would like to move, on page four, line 13, entitled Council Services Decrease the Amount by $200,000. On page five, line 19, entitled Health and Human Services Increase the Amount by $200,000. On page eight, beginning on line nine, amending the following: This increased funding shall be used for tourism projects, including the Cycling USAC Masters Championship for a total of $350,000; the city's indoor track for a total of $320,000; programming funds for Bands of Enchantment, a total of $580,000; Fusion and Route 66 Events, a total of $90,000; Global Albuquerque and Route 66 Events, $50,000; New Mexico Music Festival, $50,000; and Aframundo Festival, $10,000. And then I can, I'd be happy to explain more.
Second.
Okay, okay, it's been moved and seconded by Counselor Feeblecorn. Counselor Basson.
Madam Chair, the NMYSC, which is compiled of four nonprofits that help youth in Albuquerque, was decreased by $50,000 each this year, and in order to make sure to get them back up to the $100,000 each, we took some money out of lodgers tax funding allocations through to, Counselor Feeblecorn, actually, thank you for your discussions with Counselor Champagne and talking about that and the support for the compromise to reduce some of the funding that was there for the Bands of Enchantment, but then also making sure that we still are funding all of these other one-time appropriations using lodgers tax funding so that we can also then restore the funding for these four youth groups.
Thank you. Any other questions, councilors? Counselor Penya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just actually prepared some amendments closer to this afternoon, so I haven't had an opportunity to talk to folks, but my amendment was going to decrease the Bands of Enchantment, and I think it may even wipe out their budget, so I just want to, if this amendment and then that amendment passes, I'd like to make sure that we at least get them to the $100,000 that they were already in the budget, if that was the amount. I'm pretty sure that was what it was, if that passes. And then I just had a question for our staff. So we usually have been told that we can do these council sponsorships at 75. After that, it has to go out for RFP. So having the designation for the Bands of Enchantment at that amount wouldn't just have to go through a different process, and it would no longer be, that was my, kind of my rationale.
Mr. Motzko.
Madam Chair, Counselor Penya. In the past, we do have to go to council for any professional technical contract over $100,000.
Yes.
So that's where that number came from. Bands of Enchantment, I would have to defer to our purchasing division in DFAS to answer the question fully, but from our staff, since there are exceptions to the purchasing ordinance that Bands of Enchantment might be able to fit into, this one might not have to go to RFP, but I don't know that for certain.
So who, Madam Chair, so who would I have to ask?
Madam Chair, Counselor Penya, I would recommend asking the purchasing division in the Department of Finance and Administrative Services.
Do we have anyone from purchasing here?
Madam Chair, Director Donna Sannival can come forward. She oversees procurement. I'm not sure that we have an exception to our procurement for $780,000 or $580,000 to an entity.
Madam Chair, I'm not aware of an exception offhand. I can look into it, but offhand, I don't know of an exception.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions, Counselor Feeblecorn?
Madam Chair, no questions. I just had a couple of comments on this. So I just want to make it clear that the agreement that Counselor Basson and I made with Counselor Champagne today, and I want to thank him for his flexibility on this, was to reduce the Bands of Enchantment by 200,000 with the understanding that we would prioritize that in the mid-year cleanup so that they get the funding they need. And so just want to publicly, once again, thank Counselor Champagne for his flexibility because he's been flexible on a lot of these budget-related things, and we really appreciate that. I also just want to say that I think it's very, very important that we keep the YSC funding. These are projects like after-school programs for children, youth, and I think it was kind of a misunderstanding as to why it was originally reduced and had to do with how much appropriation had been spent down, but we found that we got them contracts kind of late, and they are on track for spending down. And so I just, I think this was an agreement that I believe everyone supported to keep Bands of Enchantment, because we all see the value of that and the, you know, we really want to see that move forward, but also making sure that we take care of our youth. So that, I just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you, Counselor Feeblecorn. Any other questions? Counselor Basson.
Madam Chair, I will close after, I just want to make sure, yes, to most of what Counselor Feeblecorn said, I do have severe hesitation for such a high sponsorship amount. And I understand, and I've talked to staff about some of the plan to spend all of the money, but that's a really big sponsorship amount, so going forward and for mid-year cleanup and for what that might be, I'm not saying I'm opposed to any of that, but I definitely have some hesitation when it comes to the $780,000 original request for what I'm calling a sponsorship. With that being said, I do agree that we need to have these aftercare programs. I do appreciate the flexibility from Counselor Champagne, and I do urge your support.
Okay, any other question? Or, no, you closed. So all those in favor, say yes and raise your hand. Those opposed? Okay, that passes. An 0 vote. All right, let's go to amendment number, or letter E, amendment four. For Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is committee amendment number four, on page three, line 18, entitled Community Events Increase the Amount by 500,000. On page eight, line eight, increase the amount by 500,000. The explanation for this is this amendment increases the transfer from the Lodger's Tax 220 to the Arts and Culture Community Events Program for the purpose of adding the Route 66 Centennial Planning and Improvements. So this was actually, Madam Chair, it was in the budget last year, and the intention was to have it, this was an oversight on my part, that I thought it was sent down with the money for the Route 66 celebration. I mean, this coming year is the Route 66, so I'm just making this whole, so to a degree. I think I had, it was at 720 or 750 is what we headed in last year. And I know Director, I don't know if she's here, but there's a ton of projects that she's been working on, so I would move a due pass.
Okay. Any questions, councilors? Any comments? Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, the question is, is what we just did, does that take down the budget to only the less than 500,000, or will we're able to still do this?
Yes, Count, it would, it would come out of lodgers tax. And could you tell me what would be left for Bands of Enchantment?
Madam Chair, Counselor Rogers, this amendment would just adjust the lodgers tax fund and putting it into the general fund. So lodgers tax is a completely different fund than Fund 110. So we're just adding another 500,000 into the general fund to sponsor Counselor Penya's Route 66 Centennial, well, the city's Route 66 Centennial Celebration, so it doesn't reduce anything other than the lodgers tax fund balance.
Thank you. That's what I was worried about, just reading it. Thank you so much. And then last question is, did we spend the whole 700,000 that we appropriated last year for this?
Count, Ms. Remler?
Madam Chair, Counselor Rogers, as we're looking this up very quickly, it's our understanding that there was about a $200,000, 500,000. There is about a $200,000 balance left for the rest of the fiscal year. So they spent 550,000.
Thank you. So this is more in line with what we would spend in the year. Thank you so much.
Director Sanchez, can you tell me what was, what you're, what you know as well?
Madam Chair, are you asking specifically about the remaining balance?
Yes.
It has all been obligated, is what I can tell you, and it will all be spent by the end of June. So there's a lot of contracts that are underway and some big orders for some big pieces that will definitely be expended by June 30th.
Can you, thank you for that. Can you tell me why the mayor didn't send it down with the budget, line item for the Centennial?
Madam Chair, I think it's, all is about priorities, right? We have done major things this year with the money that we had in the current fiscal year, plus the grant money that we were able to get from the New Mexico Tourism Department. So our big creative engagement project has been fully funded, and that will come online in September. A lot of our other major initiatives are funded. There are some recurring events that will be part of the Centennial, like the Route 66 Summer Fest, and we have some additional money from outside sources to get a bigger headliner. So there are a lot of things that are underway and things that are recurring. Some of our exhibits that we'll be doing at the Route 66 Visitor Center and at the Albuquerque Museum, those things are funded in this year for next year. And I think, you know, we all have a big wish list, and I've submitted my wish list and all of the imaginations to you and to the mayor over the last year. And, you know, there are the things that we have done and that will be on the board, and then, you know, we can't do everything we've imagined. So as always, we will make as many beautiful things happen with the money that is in our budget.
Thank you. I know this is perhaps a silly question, but what can you do with $500,000?
Counselor, I mean, we can do a lot of things. I think that will come down to really prioritizing the wish list that we have, and that was in the quarterly report that we provided. There's, there are the things that we've all talked about. There are things from other departments that they're trying to accomplish. So any additional funding that comes in from other grants or other sources or in the budget, we will prioritize together and decide what is the most important way to deploy that money in the Centennial year.
Thank you. Counselor Basson?
Madam Chair, in, with the previous amendment that I had, I brushed up on making sure I polished some of the lodgers tax uses, and, I mean, the whole purpose of it is to make sure to use it on things that will increase tourism. And I have no doubt that the Route 66 Centennial is going to increase tourism. And so I also have no doubt that it's going to be one giant party that's going to be real expensive.
Counselor, did you, Counselor Penya?
Madam Chair, yes, so thank you. So I think Director Sanchez provided us all, and then she did a mini-report, I think, at one of our meetings, just talking about everything that they're working on and what the funding currently that they're using it on, and then what potentially we could fund if we have additional dollars. Plus, I know they're applying for grants and a whole other variety of things, so just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Champagne?
Yes, I just need to point out, or some clarification. So we're going to take 500,000, or is it a million? What is five, it's just a total amount of 500,000, correct?
500,000.
And then based on what Counselor Penya had mentioned with another amendment, there's another 500,000 going in, so it's going to be, if all amendments pass, it's going to be a total of a million now going into this? 500 from something and then 500 from essentially Bands of Enchantment?
Counselor Penya?
I have two amendments that are kind of duplicative, just because I wasn't sure, and when I talked to Mr. Motzko, I just wanted to make sure I had it here. So actually, I'm probably not going to move the other amendment.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, and I, thank you, Counselor, no? Okay, I wanted to, if we pass this, will that decrease in any, do we have this extra money? We do? Okay, we're good? Okay, Counselor Penya?
Madam President, just caught an error. So we have on page three, line 18, entitled Community Events Increase the Amount by 500,000, and then on page eight, line eight, we have increased by the amount of 500,000. So I think this is where Counselor Champagne may be confused, so we need to say, yeah, decrease.
Madam Chair, Counselor Penya, thank you for catching that. That is correct.
Okay.
So number two, on line, on page eight, line eight, decrease the amount by 500,000.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, so it should be on line eight, page eight, line eight, decrease the amount of by 500,000.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Give me two seconds.
Okay. Okay, we're going to wait two seconds.
Madam Chair, counsel, I apologize. We are increasing the transfer into the general fund from lodgers tax on page eight, line eight. Then we're increasing from the general fund to the community events line by the same 500,000.
Oh, okay, okay.
I apologize.
Sorry.
So it is correct?
As written, it is.
As written, the original, okay. All right. Very good, so no decrease there. Okay, very good. All right, any other questions? Counselor Feeblecorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know this has been asked and answered, but I just want to clarify that this 500,000 will not reduce the amount going to Bands of Enchantment, that there is additional funding in the lodgers tax fund that would cover both of those things. How much additional funding in the lodgers tax fund do we have?
Madam Chair, Counselor Feeblecorn, there is at least $4.2 million in the lodgers tax fund balance.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. All those, any other questions? Okay? All those in favor of amendment number four, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? No? Okay, that passes unanimously. Very good. Okay, let's move on to amendment, letter F, amendment five, Counselor Lewis.
Madam Chair, thank you. Member five is on page 11, line five, entitled Clean City Decrease the Amount. Is that it?
No, it's the CAO.
Okay. On page three, line 26, entitled CAO Chief Administrative Office Reduce Amount by 334,000. On page six, after line 28, insert the following: The daily admission fees for the aquatics program shall be reduced by 50 cents per person in each of the following categories: adult, teen, water, or child, water aerobics, therapy, spectator, and Friday night special entry. The amendment reduces appropriations for the CO office, removing positions of Deputy Director of Public Affairs, Communications and Community Outreach Director to offset anticipated revenue decrease from a 50 cent reduction in daily admission fees for the aquatics program. Also counts for a 10% reduction in restaurant inspection permit fees, including mobile unit inspection fees, which shall be reduced by 50%. These fees were, are continued upon a future amendment to the Food and Beverage Ordinance to formalize the reductions. We just have to formalize that through an ordinance that we'll intro on Monday if we do this. Combined estimated revenue impacts approximately 266,000. I move a due pass.
Okay, we have a second by Counselor Champagne. Any discussion? Counselor Basson?
Madam Chair, I'm wondering, what is it, the ordinance, so we would have to update the ordinance if this changes? Is that what?
Yeah, because it's, it has to do with the food, food truck, and then the, you know, the percentage of there. We just have to reduce that. The money would still be there, they'd still have, it wouldn't reduce any expenses in that department, but it would reduce the revenue coming in, but would not reduce the expenses that they have right now in that department.
Right. And Madam Chair, I guess I'm just wanting to confirm that the ordinance update would be in order to make sure that the fee table is changed, is that?
That's correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Baca?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So are these, you're saying removing deputy director, are these actual jobs, people with positions?
Madam Chair, Counselor Baca, yes. This, this move would be defunding positions that have individuals employed, so we would be, City Council would be eliminating or laying off two employees in the city of Albuquerque based upon this amendment.
Counselor Feeblecorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess, thank you for that clarification. I do find that very upsetting, but I also have just a question around, I think we've seen this a couple times now, where we're changing the budget based on a future piece of legislation that may or may not pass, and I'm just wondering if that is something that has been happened, that has happened in the, in the past, because it's my understanding that we don't change fees until we change the ordinance, and then we figure out what to do with the fees. So I would just love to ask if anyone from our budget or from the administration can talk about, is this a common occurrence that I have somehow just missed over the last couple years?
Counselor, oh, Counselor Champagne, oh, wait, you need an answer.
I was asking the administration for a response, Madam Chair.
Chair Grouse and Counselor Feeblecorn, this is unusual. I've not seen this happen before, so I think it's a little out of order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I, I don't know that the bill would, it might, I don't know. I don't know what it says, but I think- know. I don't know what it says. But I think inserting things into the budget that have not passed this body might not be the best approach to budgeting for the city of Albuquerque. Thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Madam Chair, I mean, this happens all the time. Been around for, what, 16 years? We do this all the time. We have to do it because when we, you know, make changes to the budget, and some of those have to do with just ordinances that need to be changed or updated. If, and the council has a decision on that, too. We could introduce that on Monday. It's already written up. Again, it happens all the time. It's happened many times. And if the council, it's not locking in the council to anything in the future either, because council could choose to do this or not, or do this or not tonight. They did it. Could choose to do the ordinance or not. And all it does is just put the, put the money in the bun, in the fund balance that could be later allocated right back to where it was or somewhere else. And, and by the way, the, first of all, I mean, the mayor, the mayor has, what, 35 PIOs? I mean, this is two PIOs out of 35. I think, and again, it's general enough to where the, you know, the CAO's office can spend that money however they want. Just took a 200, $200,000 reduction to council services. And so, you know, there's some, there's some flexibility there, certainly. But, you know, it's not anything uncommon from what we, what we're doing on a lot of these other amendments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Penya?
Yes, I see that there's a few reductions here. So I was just wondering if maybe Counselor Lewis would want to like revisit these, because I know one of them is one that we had just moved. It was, this is, that we had just increased the restaurant inspection permit fees, because I know, I don't know if we have anyone here from the admin who couldn't, is Director Varrala, who's the one that does the permitting? Because, environmental health, I'm sorry.
Environmental health.
Because we just increased them. No one's here.
No one's here from that department. Who can help?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Counselor Penya, which department?
Environmental health.
Environmental health. Yes, Director Paul Rogers is here to speak to environmental health fees.
Hi, Director.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, so it just had, just a couple of questions, just because I know we just increased these to help to cover some items budgetary, and because, you know, I think one of my concerns with even ever increasing some of the fees is that it goes to the general fund and not back directly to the department for some of those fees. But I just need help recollecting why the necessity for the fees, so that I just need to help.
Madam Chair, Counselor Penya, during the last fiscal year, we did change the food code as well as amending those fees. The fees hadn't been amended in quite a period of time, so they were reflective of the other increases that the, that have taken place throughout time. The food truck fees specifically were deemed to be on the high side, so we worked with the community and with you all, and amended that downward to make it more palatable.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So yes, I remember now why we did that. So it would be hard for me to support this. I mean, I don't know if we want to like go back and visit this for Monday, but right now, I don't think I can support when we worked really hard on, on all those issues. And especially with the food trucks, I know, I've just had a meeting where there was a lot of people from the food truck industry just talking about how some are doing it correctly, and then some, some aren't. And we really need help there. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Madam Chair, and Director, I'm sure the food truck people would absolutely love this, wouldn't you think? I mean, so I, I mean, we have any concern about the food truck operators or the restaurant owners, I mean, reducing their fees and cutting the food truck fees in half. And we're not cutting any expenses to your, to your department whatsoever. So no, no expenses that are being cut from your department. We're just putting some money back in the pockets of hardworking restaurant owners and food truck operators that are barely making it right now, especially in a time of inflation. And so I don't have a question for you, Director. I just, I just, you know, I would think that you would acknowledge you don't have to, and anybody would, that, you know, making a pretty significant, you know, cut to some high fees that we added, that the administration recommended and added a few years ago. And by the way, you know, the director's not going to see anything. I don't think the director knew where that money went anyways. Maybe you did. I mean, maybe you just know that it just goes back in the general fund. I mean, that's what it did. So we raised the fees, it goes to the general fund, and it's not spent by the department. I mean, we didn't actually raise any of those fees to hire inspectors or anything like that. We used other parts of the, that the director still has. And so, you know, the only thing this would do is lower the fees of, that come from the cost of hardworking families and people that are trying to make ends meet and try to have a good business that serve a lot of people in the city.
Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis, I'd just like to add that we did add two inspectors this fiscal year.
Madam Chair, you did, but you didn't, you didn't do it because of these funds, because of the new revenue. Your budget was increased anyways, and the entire, the entire general fund was increased, you know, to be able to cover it. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor, you're good. Counselor Champagne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question for the CAO. These two positions that you would lose are PIO positions?
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, these two positions are in, are positions that we use. One of them is overseeing multiple communications staff to ensure that we're providing transparency of information related to APD. And I know that the community expects us to be providing accurate and timely. I can tell you that I receive communication information that's published, sent to the public 24 hours a day, seven days a week regarding APD matters. It also eliminates a position, again, an individual that does work related to connections in the community to ensure that we are connecting boards and commissions, volunteers in that work, and ensuring that we're connecting within every one of your districts, all of the work related to community interest in serving the city as volunteers, but also in all of the many ways that we then create engagement strategies for those, for the community.
Okay, so they are PIOs or not? Are they supervisors or PIOs?
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, the, one of the positions serves as a PIO in addition to managing communications staff, and the other is not a PIO.
Okay, Madam Chair, how many PIOs do you have for the mayor's office or the administration?
For, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, may I ask for a clarification on your question?
You know specifically that, no, for wherever, you know specifically that these two PIOs do these two things. How many PIOs does the administration have, then? Are this, is this a, because it's removing from your budget of the chief administrative office. So, and you say there are four, two PIOs. How many PIOs do you have?
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, I would not call these individuals PIOs. That's why I'm struggling with the question. I want to be clear, we have a limited number of individuals with the title of PIO within the city. We have communications staff throughout our departments. They do far more than press releases.
Okay, then I'll go further than that. How many communication people do you have in your staff?
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, I, if you give me a moment, I can pull up my report to make sure that I can answer that specific question.
Madam Chair, you would allow her some time, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
Counselor Basson?
Madam Chair, Mr. Matzko, is it, is it correct to say that counsel cannot direct which positions will be removed from the administration? We can just remove the funding for it, and then it's up to the administration. So to sit here and even talk about which positions we may or may not be trying to remove, quote unquote, I think that it's, it's a separation of powers violation for us to dictate. And am I correct, or am I misinterpreting that?
Madam Chair, counsel, President Basson, that's correct. We just dictate the funding where it goes. That's it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I didn't introduce this. She introduced the two positions. I'm just clarification of it. But I didn't introduce it. I'm not asking the positions based on her information that she allowed to give us.
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, the positions are, I did not introduce the positions.
Okay. Counselor Baca?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I absolutely want to reduce the fees on this and some of these other things. However, talking about people's jobs and livelihoods over a five second conversation, I really struggle with that. Yeah, I really struggle taking people's jobs away over a confusing conversation we're having. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Madam Chair, thank you. I mean, Counselor Basson's correct, and Counselor Champagne, that we, saying in this is we, you know, we need to be able to identify an amount, you know, I mean, to cover some of these other reductions to our, to the people of the city of Albuquerque. But there's, you know, discretion within the CAO's office of, of what they do with that, you know? And by the way, there are 35, you know, what do you call them, PIOs or communications, you know, people in the city of Albuquerque. You know, I mean, the mayor could use the PIO and DMD and HHH. The rest of the 35 or 33 that answer to him for all these things. You know, there was a time when we had five PIOs not too long ago, PIOs not too long ago in our city. And so, I mean, again, whether you agree or not, I mean, this is an example of, you know, some pretty, you know, bloated areas. And in reality, it's not getting rid of positions because there's discretion on how they want to spend the, you know, the CAO has discretion on how much she wants to spend money in her office. And I'd remind everybody that we just, we just reduced the council services by 200,000.
Thank you. Counselor Penya? Okay, thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Counselor Feeblecorn?
Thank you, Madam President, or Madam Chair. I did want to just clarify one thing. We did not just reduce the council services budget by 200,000. We reduced the amount of the Bands of Enchantment council-directed sponsorship with the agreement of the sponsor with a plan, a long-term plan. So that was not funding that is for city council services staff. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. All right, let's go to a vote. All those in favor of committee amendment number five, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? No? Okay, that fails on a two to seven vote. Okay, Counsel, Counselor Lewis, amendment number six.
All right, Madam Chair, good discussion. Here we go. On page six, after line 28, insert the following, city of Albuquerque golf fees per round shall be reduced by $1. On page seven, line 23, entitled Transit Operating Fund 661, decrease the amount by 258, 258,000. On page 11, line 23, entitled ABQ Ride, decrease the amount by 258,000. This amendment reallocates 258,000 from the transit subsidies to offset reduction of golf per round fees. Madam Chair, so there was a number, I think, how many, how many, let's see, how many vacant positions in transit, Mr. Matzko?
Correct.
I move a de-pass.
A second? Do I have a second? Second? Counselor Rogers?
Madam Chair, yeah, I mean, just, just, just so we can talk real quick about where the, where the money's coming from. So total vacancies.
Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis, in the report during the CAO hearings, Transit had 104 motor coach operators vacant, many for more than 300 days. In addition, they had 80-something mechanics vacant.
Okay. And then, my understanding is that all those positions were over 300 days vacant?
Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis, many of them were more than 300 days vacant.
Okay. And then there's a calculation of, of program reductions, which were just a fraction of those, just a fraction of those in this, in this department, as opposed to almost entirely out of the other ones. So the administration had no problem with cutting 5.54 million dollars out of the police department for vacancies, but, you know, left this one with a pretty good amount of people that I think they, that there's, there's absolutely no way that there's any intention or ability to be able to make those hires over the next year. So, you know, that's, that was the reasoning for it. Our staff helped to kind of identify that and see that, kind of using some of the same logic in the other departments that the mayor kind of uses. He developed his budget there. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to ask Director Keener. I know during her presentation, talked about all of the recruiting efforts and that. So I just, before we, especially because Transit, I need them to get back to pre-COVID routes. I just want to hear from the director what this would mean for your department.
Madam Chair and Counselor Rogers, yes, we do have several vacancies, as we talked about during the budget hearings. The mechanic count's not even close to being accurate that he gave you. We're more like 30 vacancies when it comes to our mechanics, and that's from lead to vehicle servicers. Our driver vacancies, we're currently sitting at about 118, and that includes both our motor coach operators and our Sunvan chauffeurs. As we mentioned during the budget hearings, we are very actively hiring. And in fact, I have 18 new MCOs right now that have been in training since April 5th. So it's a really big influx of drivers for us. And one of the things we did was remove the education requirement just recently on our MCOs. We were finding that a lot of them that were applying were getting hung up, not being able to provide education. And we're actually using the CDL testing to really confirm that they have the education that we need in order for them to, to be motor coach operators for us. On top of that, we're down to about 18 vacancies on the Sunvan chauffeur side. And again, we've got another three that are going to be onboarded this Monday. And then we've got about eight of them that just came in on a hiring event there today that we're, we're processing through pretty quickly. An additional four motor coach operators on Monday, too. And also interviewed six more motor coach operators today that, that we're progressing forward with. So we're starting to see those numbers come back pretty, pretty quickly. And we have dropped below the 100 vacancy count on our motor coach operators right now. And it really will be imperative that we continue to have those positions available, especially as we progress and implement the network plan that we are, we are really gearing up towards. So really important for us to continue to be able to have those positions and bring those drivers on, and the mechanics especially, too.
Sure. So thank you. So one last question. So if we pass this, and you see, you get your hires up, and we fix it at mid-year cleanup, because I think, I don't, I don't think you're going to hire 118 folks in the next six months. I think just for my vote, right, I think this is something we could clean up in the mid-year cleanup and put back in your budget, once you get to maybe half of those hires, similarly to what we talk about, I talk about all the time with APD. We don't actually defund their positions. Like, I haven't seen that. I know the administration may have, but we didn't. So I just, just thank you for answering what that would mean.
If I could, Madam Chair and Counselor Rogers, I think it's important to also understand that we do use those funds for other things. So one of the things that we've most recently done is to help with our mechanics. We've had a maintenance tech that we brought on site that's been helping us to catch up on our PMs. And it's one of the reasons we've been able to really get our buses back up and get our spare ratio to where we have spares on a daily basis. If you remember during the summer, we were having lots of issues with the mechanics and not being able to get the buses out. And this has helped us to get on our feet. That, that is expensive, and we're not giving up on hiring mechanics and trying to change that process so that we can start bringing mechanics on board and progressing them up to the experience level that we need. But those funds do help to support that as well.
Yeah, and I think, Madam Chair, I think that's part of conversations I've had with the council. I think that's kind of part of our frustration, is that we budget for a bunch of staff, we don't hire them, and then we just use it for something else, where we just need to get to where we need to be, and then budget correctly for those other things. So we're not using vacancy savings as kind of a, we do extra things with those. I think for me, it's hard to budget that way. So thank you for answering those questions.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Madam Chair, thanks. So Director, I guess I would ask you real quick. So by, by the way, this, this has nothing to do with, with mechanics. I mean, expect any, absolutely doesn't touch max. There's 111 empty, you know, vacant motor coach, right? And it's the same thing. I mean, same thing. So also, there's, we're not, we're not taking away any positions, we're not taking away jobs. We're doing exactly what the mayor's office did in their proposal with all the other departments, just, just putting a program savings on it. That's, that's all it is. So, and same way, you can come back in mid-year and say, okay, we get, we hired 40 motor coach operators, and, but we think we're going to order, we're going to, we're going to have, you know, 70, you know? And by the way, if we, if you did that, this wouldn't touch it, by the way, either. This wouldn't, this would still allow you to do that. Wouldn't, I mean, this doesn't, goes nowhere near that. And so, so I guess, Director, I mean, are you going to hire 111 motor coach operators in one year?
Madam Chair and Counselor Lewis, I am going to do everything in my power to get to that number. I can't say that. I can't say that, that I will or not. Is it a stretch? It definitely is, but we're going to continue to hire until we're staffed up.
Yeah, obviously, I'd expect you to say that, but I mean, it, I mean, it's not the reality. If it was the reality, then, you know, the mayor would have given, wouldn't have had any program reductions for it at all, or in any other department. So anyways, this is the exact same logic and of how the mayor built his entire budget, so. But what this does do, Madam Chair, is, you know, hey, let's, let's, you know, let's, let's reduce some, some costs, you know, the people that enjoy the services that the city offers that they pay for anyways, and be able to put some money back in their pockets and actually give some relief, you know, to some people right now. This would be a great, great direction to go. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Feeblecorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I do have to point out, and Director Keener can verify this, I think I'm right, that this committee sub that we have before us already reduces quite a few positions in, in the transit department. It has a reduction of six marketing positions that were discussed at the last meeting, and then there's already, I believe, ten or eleven motor coach operators that are reduced in the committee sub that we just approved. So, and I do say that I go to a lot of community events, and every player I go, transit is out there, marketing. They're the only city department I see out trying so hard to get employees. And we have a new route system opening very soon, and we do need to fully fund these positions so that we can continue the routes that we are going to have and the improvements to our system that we have all been asking for and pretty much demanding from Director Keener for years. And so I, I do question whether it's appropriate to pit golf against transit. If, if I have to choose between giving golfers a dollar off and providing transit for some of our most impoverished neighborhoods, I'm going to always choose transit. I don't think a dollar reduction in golf fees is really going to make that much of a difference for golfers, but a reduction in any type of routes for transit would make a huge difference for people who live in our community.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Lewis.
Madam Chair, this would not cause any reductions. And always, I mean, you know, transit's been extremely reduced because they simply, you know, people aren't riding the buses, and also, you know, they can't hire drivers, you know, it's a lot of challenges and problems, and, but anyways, this doesn't reduce anything, and this wouldn't affect them anything whatsoever. It's like every other department where the mayor's office says, hey, we got this mid-year thing, and we'll come back and we'll, we'll talk to you guys, and we'll just, we'll hire them if we, if we need to hire them, right? And so this is like a shell budget. I mean, this, the budget they propose and these program savings, this is a magic, magical, you know, numbers that are put out there, and they took away from those numbers, you know, to be able to make many amendments and changes, and that's what this does as well. It gives the same amount of freedom that the mayor and mayor's office and the administration loves to have and be able to say, I can come back and still have the freedom to be able to, you know, hire people when we need them. And so, to make it very clear, it's also not divisive, it's not pitting anybody else against anybody else. I mean, you know, if you, if you say it is, then it is, but nobody said it was. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Lewis. I have a question, Counselor, or Director Keener. I know you work really hard to get new motor coach operators, and you talk about your hiring, and that's all good, but we don't seem to be getting less and less vacancies. And so my question to you is, how often do we lose motor coach operators? What is your, you know, that kind of rate?
Madam Chair, I think, again, as we talked during budget hearings, you know, we saw a really good hiring uptick there last spring about this time, and then in the fall, lost some people again. I really do believe that a lot of that had to do, you know, with the, the environment that, that we had there and the support that, that the drivers had.
Okay.
You know, and I will say right now, we filled out that staff at that level from our, and actually split the department up, too, so that we have fixed route operations and paratransit operations, which give much more specific support to each of those operations, as well as filling out the assistant operation manager's positions and the supervisor's positions, so that there's much more field support and presence. And I think that that is going to be a huge change for us going forward, and we're already hearing it from many of the drivers. And so I think that the retention piece is going to be much better than it has in the past. I'm very hopeful about that, and, and we're going to continue to do that. And I think that we'll see those drivers start to come back around. And I would like to say ridership is up. It is up. We have people that are riding. We were over seven million riders last year, and we are already on track to have, you know, probably close to seven and a half, maybe upwards of that here for this year as well. So it's very important that we do protect the service.
Thank you. I appreciate that update. I, I, I want to be able to help people with the quality of life, too, as well as, you know, being able to use public transportation. I think that this, we were given twelve thousand dollars in the budget that was sent down from the eleventh floor in the fund balance, and we had to come up with fine ways, to be creative, to increase the salaries of a lot of the people that work for us in the city, and we had to help with the councilors' needs because they all know what they need in their areas of town and so forth. And so to be creative, I think we've done a very good job working, and I expected a lot of amendments this evening because this is a working document that we're all working on together. We also only received the second quarter projections from this year. If we had the third quarter projections, which the third quarter ended in March, we would have had more to work with, and we didn't. But I am hopeful that the third quarter projections will show that things are improving and there will be more revenue, and I think that we can come back in, in the fall and do that committee cleanup, a budget cleanup, and if all of a sudden we're down to twenty vacancies at the, at the, in the bus department and the transit department, then, and we'll have more money to, to allocate, I think that would be a win-win for everybody. So I do like this amendment. I think it's appropriate, and it helps everybody in the city, so, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of Committee Amendment Number Six, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Okay, that fails on a three to six. Okay. Okay, Counsel Lewis, we're going to do G., which will be Amendment Seven.
Madam Chair, thank you. Let's see, Amendment G., or Amendment Number Seven, is on page eleven, line five, entitled Clean City, decrease the amount by two million one hundred thousand. On page eleven, after sixteen, insert the following. Furthermore, the residential solid waste collection fee shall be reduced by a dollar per month effective July first, two thousand twenty-five. Solid Waste Management Department shall absorb the corresponding revenue loss through internal cost savings, including reduction of two million one hundred to the Clean City program within Fund six fifty-one. These adjustments shall be incorporated into the department's operating plan without reducing residential collection services. The Office of Management and Budget is directed to revise the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six revenue schedule accordingly. The amendment reduces the monthly residential solid waste collection by, by one dollar, and, you know, every, every person that lives in the city of Albuquerque would, would, would see that. Move approval.
I have a second. I will second that for you. Any discussion? Counselor Feeblecorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have the full list of all the things that Clean Cities does, but I will say that it is some very important work. In my district, the folks that call me on a daily basis ask for things like median cleanups, decampments, cleanups of decampments, Duke City ambassadors, which we just finally got expanded to the whole art line and is, is coming up into District Seven now, and it did, a week doesn't go by that somebody doesn't take a photo of the person with the yellow vest and send it to me and say, this is what we want in District Seven. And so a reduction of over two million dollars in those services is just not something that I think my constituents would want to support, and I for one, and I think many people would agree, am willing to pay a dollar a month to have all of those services and keep our city clean and looking nice.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Committee Amendment Number Seven, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
You have those opposed? Say no.
That's fine.
That one fails on a one-eight. Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it's been Committee Amendment Number Eight, correct?
Yes.
This is on page fourteen, after line fifteen, insert the following. The total number of full-time employees who work in, in, in the public information, including but not limited to public information officers, P I O.'s, public affairs, marketing, and other staff whose primary duties involve public relations, marketing, or communications, regardless of title or department, shall be limited to a combined total of ten F T.'s across all city departments and offices. The Office of Management and Budget shall reduce funding positions in excess of this cap during final personal cleanup, and the resulting savings shall be reallocated to the general fund balance for redistribution by the council through mid-year adjustments or supplemental appropriation. Administration shall prioritize retention of P I O.'s and public safety and emergency response departments when implementing this reduction. Renumber all sections accordingly. This amendment limits city public information staff to ten F T.'s across all departments. Excess positions will be removed during final cleanup. With savings returned to the general fund, public safety departments, A F R., A P D., A C S., D M D. shall be prioritized in retaining P I O. staff.
Is there a second?
Move through.
I will second that for you. Any questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Committee Amendment Number Eight, say yes and raise your hand.
Yes.
Opposed? No? Okay, that's going to fail, too. Okay, Committee Amendment Number Nine, Counselor Feeblecorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will move Committee Amendment Number Nine, which is on page eleven, line twenty-three, entitled A B Q Ride, decrease the amount by five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, and on page eleven, line twenty-seven, entitled Strategic Support, increase the amount by five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Is there a second counsel opinion, second sit?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Can I, may I explain, Madam? So this, I spoke with Director Keener today. There is, this is all just moving money around in transit, it's no additional money from anything, but we, we, we're talking about the importance of those positions, those marketing positions that were cut in the committee sub, and I definitely understand the rationale there, but Director Keener supported perhaps moving some money from their contractual line item over so that we can keep those folks employed and doing the work, and she thinks that this would, you know, work out fine for her operations, maintain those positions, and we would not see, you know, a reduction in, in services or staff. And so with that, I would ask your support for this one.
Any other discussion? I really like this amendment. Thank you.
Me, too. Thank you, Director Keener.
Yes, thank you, Director, very much. All those in favor, say yes and raise your hand. Opposed?
No.
Okay. All right, that passes. Okay, now we're going to go on to, I'm going to do, okay. Counselor Penya, Committee Amendment Number Ten.
And this is the one for the housing, correct?
No, I thought, mine aren't in the same order, I'm so sorry. Okay. Okay. Well, on page three, after line four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this one is on page three, after line four, insert the following. Section five, the amount of four million, forty-one thousand is reserved for an additional one percent cost of living COLA increase for all regular full-time employees except, except positions associated with I A F F. local two-two-four, which has negotiated increases in fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. The additional one percent COLA is subject to the negotiations for all applicable positions upon execution of C B A. contracts agreements. The amount hereby reserved and all will be distributed to the respective department and programs by the Office of Management, and here it has all, all the lines. So the, the explanation for this is this amendment will provide the necessary funding to give an additional one percent COLA for a total of three percent COLA to full-time employees, with the exception of A I F F. union members who have ratified and approved a contract for two thousand twenty-six. The above lines reflect the programs where the reduction was taken to provide funding for the four million dollars, the four million-plus dollars. I move a do-pass.
Okay, we have a second by Counselor Rogers. Any discussion? Counselor Feeblecorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm interested to know what would be cut from each of these line items, and specifically open space management, a reduction in seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars for open space management seems like a lot, and I was just wondering if there was somebody here that could talk to that from the open space division, or perhaps Director Simon.
Director Simon, I don't think he's, is he there?
He is here. Madam Chair, can I have him?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I, this, and I don't know if you have it in front of you, so it's hard to discuss it, but it would decrease the amount for open space management on page six, line twenty-one in the budget by seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I am very concerned that we don't have enough money for open space management as it is, so I realize off the top of your head you don't have an answer, but can you talk through what seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars may, you know, impact in terms of open space management for the city of Albuquerque?
Well, thank you, Madam, Madam Chair, and Counselors Penya and Feeblecorn. I don't have the amendment in front of me, but of course, as I understand, the substitute and the proposed amendment, it's sort of a directly using the seven hundred and twenty that was added, particularly for Boski fire protection in particular. So those, of course, are very important programs that we must execute to protect lives and property in our city, literally, you know, like hundreds of millions of dollars of properties adjacent to the Boski, and so our efforts to thin fuels and restore the Boski is really what that money would do. So we, we need funds in that area dramatically. Now, of course, I understand you always have tough decisions, but I think this is, the next point is what makes it even harder. In the general obligation bond that will, you approve that goes to the voters in, in the fall, we typically get funds in the Geo. bond that we use for Boski restoration and fire reduction, fuel reduction, right? That would normally be where we would have some funds to do these kinds of things. That program was eliminated in the Geo. bond. So we have zero in the Geo. bond for this sort of function that I think the substitute was putting money toward. So if the funds in the substitute are then used, we're, we're at a hard, hard zero on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, you know, I want to thank the, the chair for putting in that wildfire mitigation funding that I think is really important. It was one of my, you know, important parts of, of my budget request, and I know that Madam Chair worked very, very hard to make sure that all of those things were included in the budget, and this definitely concerns me. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Lewis?
I guess to our staff, thank you, Madam Chair. The hundred thousand dollars out of the C A O.'s office, where would that come from? Not designated, right? You just, you just said, just take it somewhere out of your office, so they, they could fire somebody if they wanted to, right? Just eliminate a, a job?
Madam Chair, Counsel Lewis, the council's responsibility is to allocate the money, where the department.
So we didn't even, we don't need to put it, put a thing on anything, then, right? Tell them what to do with it at all?
Madam Chair, Counsel Lewis, because the budget is passed by a program level, the administration decides where the funding goes.
Yeah, obviously, we just had it in, you know, other amendments, you know, you have it in there to be able to say, here's an idea of where you can get it from, correct? But, you know, Ms. Single, how do you feel about a hundred thousand dollars out of your, out of your budget?
Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis, for the opportunity to ensure that we have funding for additional pay increase for employees, based on Counsel Penya's interest here, we, without it being directed at an individual employee, which was what the previous resolution indicated. which was what the previous resolution indicated, we'll work to accommodate, obviously, through our budget, this reduction.
All right, Madam Chair. And just the hypocrisy there is just unbelievable. Absolute hypocrisy of doing it like that. So, look, we didn't have to designate it. It wasn't even designated. You could do whatever you want to with it. But, you know, the CAO is fine with just, yeah, take $100,000 out of our budget. We're good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other discussion? I, okay, I want to just say, all of the page numbers are off a little bit, which is not a big deal. It can be fixed. But I don't want to support this right now. It's not that I don't want to support the intent of it, but I would like to have discussion for Monday, perhaps, and then I could understand it better to be able to pass it. But I, there are things in it. I'm not familiar with what it's going to take, what's going to be taken away. And like Counselor Feeblecorn mentioned, there are some things that are important for the city as well. So Counselor Lewis?
Madam Chair, Ms. Single, what are you gonna use? What are you gonna reduce your budget by, by $100,000?
Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis, by $99,000 for, it would be likely out of contractual services in my budget.
And what exactly is that? What kind of contractual services did you plan for when you prepared six months for this budget? And you told us that you need this money? So for example, contractual services, what exactly, what are the contractual services that you're gonna cut $100,000 from? What are some examples of that? What specifically is that? Because it should have been a specific plan and a reason why you needed $100,000. So what specifically, and what specific contracts are you gonna cut this year of $100,000?
Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis, I, obviously, budgeting on the fly as we talk right now is not... We'd be happy to look through the budget and come back and provide you exactly what we will change. This amount of $99,000 to support the opportunity to get an additional 1% COLA for all city employees, we're happy to accommodate and determine which contract we would be not completing this year, or actually reducing. We can reduce several contracts if that is what is needed, some portion of each of them. We can change scopes. We could also potentially, as within our department, an option is if we have a vacancy, we can hold a vacancy for several months to ensure that we can accommodate that as well.
So, Madam Chair, and so that, I mean, to me, that's doing... You did your budget on the fly. If you could just easily say, yeah, we don't need $100,000. I know for six months we've been preparing that budget, and I told you we need this amount of money. Present it to the council. But yeah, we got an amendment tonight. You know, this reduces your budget by $100,000. Yeah, we're cool with it. That's great, you know? We need it for that anyways, and we're good. That's some pretty awful budgeting, and it shows that there's absolutely no plan within your office, you know, for things that really matter. And it also just reiterates the, you know, the fact that, you know, this council, you know, I mean, that's part of our job, is to help prioritize, you know, with the funding. And so, again, I mean, in one instance, hey, you know, no, don't transfer this money, don't do anything with it. Another instance, yeah, go for it. Unbelievable. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, as I had mentioned, there's some amendments. You know, we, Madam Chair, did a great job in getting all our requests into the budget. I think I have another amendment here in a second, and this is for the Ask Me Green Circle. So I usually ask for two requests if I'm the budget chair, if I'm not the budget chair. One of them is to get people who are making under 17 bucks an hour to get them up to par. And then I always try at minimum to see if we can do a 1% increase. I know the budget was real tight for you. You had some, you know, restrictions on what you can do. So all these, I went to the admin. I told them that this is what my intention was. So I was gonna pull it from a certain spot. They said, let's pull it from these areas. And then we were kind of shy, the 777. So I said, for the purposes of passing it tonight, to get, to take it out of council services. But my intention is, is on Monday, to see if we can increase that through an amendment back. So just wanted to say that.
Counselor Basson.
Madam Chair, my concern is that when I cross-reference on page seven, line eight, entitled Professional Accountability, it actually is saying that we're gonna be pulling 1.2 million from APD. And further throughout this amendment, they don't match. So truly, my concern is, if we vote on this tonight, really, are we voting on the page seven, line eight, that says professional accountability? Or I would imagine, through my experience, we're voting on page seven, line eight of the committee substitute, which is pulling from APD? Or, again, further on throughout this amendment? Or that, I can't support it with the incorrect information on here. And I'm willing to consider supporting it with the correct information. But I really don't feel comfortable supporting it with that inaccurate cross-reference. Because I, as much as I trust all of what we do, I don't want it to backfire in the end.
Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so when I actually asked the, well, let the administration know that this was my intention. So I guess, and I don't know if the admin can speak to this, but there seems to be some line items that don't mesh up with what, with the budget overall. So for the purpose of, I think of maybe all our amendments that are being passed tonight, we have to make sure that those are lined up correctly. But I guess I would ask Mr. Motzko if they're not. Because I do have, I went and based on, so I have my amendments, and this is why I'm kind of a little bit of a hot mess tonight, is because my amendments are duplicative, one for what you guys have, and one for what the admin has. So if we can get clarification now on how we need to proceed, and I can read into the record the correct one.
Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to, this is...
We were waiting. Oh, okay. Were you ready to speak? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Counselor Rogers. Mr. Motzko.
Madam Chair, Vice President Penya. New technology sometimes presents difficulties. This happened during the Capitol budget. As you remember, at the beginning of the Capitol meeting, we were all a little off on numbers. So what happened was, in the iPads, with the OneDrive, the clerk made a technical adjustment this morning, just cleaning up spaces. That threw the budget off, the legislation off by two lines. So I have the correct lines for your amendment now. I can bring them up to you. But talking to the clerk, we can make these adjustments over tomorrow and over the weekend for the bill on Monday, or we can come back on Monday. But that's what happened. Your late amendments were based off of a earlier version that when the clerk made the cleanup, changed the lines. So we apologize for that. We will send everything to the clerk first before we send it out.
Madam Chair. Mr. Motzko, thank you, yes. So I have both. So I was like, I don't know which one to read. So the one, the correct one? And do we have to correct the rest of the amendments that were just passed? Or do we... Or were the rest of them are read into the record, correct?
Madam Chair, Vice President Penya, no. The earlier amendments were based off of the updated... So these late amendments are gonna be two lines off.
Okay, so I'm gonna read off of my notes here. Okay, so, Madam Chair, if I can just read it into the record?
Yes.
Committee Amendment Number Ten? Was that Ten is the correct number?
Just point of order, real quick, please.
Yes. Counselor Rogers.
Thank you. Can we please just make sure the amendment is on the screen for the people in the public watching, and the folks watching here? And I just also have to say, like, this is people's pay. Like, this is a big deal. We need to make sure our stuff's right. Like, I take responsibility for my stuff. I don't put it on the staff. We need to make sure our stuff is right. And this is people's pay we're talking about here. Just have to say that. Thank you.
What is she saying?
Okay. Counselor Penya.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not actually understanding what you were just, your comment. But so on page three after line, after line three, insert the following. Section five, the amount $4 million, $41,000 is reserved for additional 1% cost of living COLA increase for all regular full-time positions except positions associated with the IAFF Local 224, which has negotiated increases for positions associated with the IAFF 224. I don't think I have to read that into the record because that was read earlier. So I'm gonna just skip to line two on page seven. Line 10, entitled Professional Accountability, decrease the amount by 1.2 million. And then on page three, line 26, entitled CAO Office, decrease the amount by 99,000. On page seven, line 26, entitled Community Recreation, decrease the amount by 120,000. On page seven, line 27, entitled Educational Initiatives, decrease the amount by 400,000. On page three, on line 29, entitled Early Retirement, decrease the amount by 275. On page six, line 23, entitled Open Space Management, decrease the amount by 720. On page four, line 13, entitled Council Services, decrease the amount by 777. On page three, delete section five, lines four through seven. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselors, any, Counselor Lewis.
Madam Chair, thank you. So, Ms. Motzko, what is professional services? Where does that come out of? 1.2 professional accountability? So 1.2 million dollars in reduction or cut to professional services? What department is that?
Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis, that is APD.
It's APD. Is the chief here tonight?
No.
All right, so the chief's office, or I don't know. Ms. Single, you know, I guess you can talk about this. So again, this amendment cuts another 1.2 million dollars from public safety, from APD. I'm assuming you're fine with it, perfectly fine with it.
Madam Chair, Counselor Lewis, this 1.2 million dollars represents two specific line items related to professional accountability. It is reducing our risk recovery that we have allocated to APD by $1 million, so it does not directly impact the operations within APD. And the second item is reducing the allocation of the Independent Monitor's contract with effort related to the DOJ consent decree, which was just terminated. And therefore, the contract we have with Dr. Gendre's office will not be continued into the new fiscal year. It was in the budget at the time that we sent it down, of course, because we had not had that termination of the consent decree by the judge at that point. So the two, the 1.2 is reflected through risk recovery reduction in that contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, once again, you know, last week, two weeks ago, when the chief was up here, you know, we had program savings of 5.4 million, but APD's budget was increased slightly. So take the vacancies. We're not gonna hire many police officers. We're gonna spend it on these other important things. And we had a conversation about, chief, do you need every bit of this? Do you need more? He said, we absolutely need every bit of this, every bit of it. You know, please don't, I think, he said, please don't take my budget away, you know? Please don't take my money away. So once again, APD is perfectly fine with a cut to public safety for 1.2 million dollars. I'm not picking on this amendment, because if I was, you know, I mean, Counselor Penya is doing what, you know, we all do as counselors. Hey, if money's not being used, then let's find some good purposes for it, right? So no fault to the sponsor. It's just unbelievable, again, that we get a budget from the mayor's office. They beg for it. And then, for some reason, another 1.2 million, billion-dollar, million-dollar cut from APD is perfectly fine with this administration.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Counselor, I would like to say something. Counselor Penya said that she went to the administration to see how she could get that done. And I will tell you that the last couple of weeks, we have gone to this administration and asked for some wiggle room, how we want to make some changes. And you know what I was told? There is no room for wiggle room. And so then, it's okay for Counselor Penya to go to you all. And then she can, and you, all of a sudden, you can find some wiggle room. And it's very disappointing that you will work with some counselors, but not with the budget chair, when we're trying to... And I'm very disappointed to hear that. I, some of, I'm just flabbergasted, to be honest with you. I want to get these people, these wonderful workers and the people in Albuquerque, I want to get them a higher wage, for sure, an increase. But do, I think, and that, I'm just, I'm, I don't even have words right now. I'm just so flabbergasted by this. And I would like to, I want to work with you over the next three days and figure this out. I would like to have some communication. That would be helpful. I totally want to, I'm just floored by what I am going through. Counselor, that Feeblecorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to just say, I think that the Cow Chair on this operating budget worked with all of us and with the administration as much as possible. I also want to say that, you know, telling me that the administration is okay with these changes doesn't mean that I'm okay with these changes. I don't know what these changes are. And I feel like we've all dived pretty deeply into the budget over the last couple of weeks. And I have a really good feel for what was added in by the Cow Chair because it was things that each of us asked for. And some of them I don't like, and some of them were mine. And I, but I understand what they are. I don't understand all of this. I agree, I would love to get more money for all of our employees. I would love to implement the entire class and comp study. But I just, I just want to back that with your statement with, I agree. I think Cow Chair has done the best job she possibly could. And I'm just disappointed that there's now money available that was not available when the chair was trying to do this work.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question for the administration, because we're talking about APD. And thank you, Counselor Lewis. I didn't realize that that's where it was from. How much recurring funds APD, does APD have for the DOJ?
Madam Chair, Counselor Rogers, specifically, the monitoring contract that we had that was, we were under the consent decree required to have, was a contract with Counselor, I'm sorry, with Dr. Gendre's monitoring agency that we had put in for this next fiscal year. We had a contract amount for $250,000, which was significantly reduced. So we had already planned for a reduction based upon the reduction in work that the monitoring team was doing. We had not negotiated that new contract yet, but we were estimating based upon the way the contract had been reduced over time. And so that is what you see in the 1.2, 200,000 of that is that contract via, it'll essentially eliminating funding for the contract since the consent decree has been terminated in the last two weeks. And then, so that is what that line item equals. I just want, if I may, Madam Chair, I think it's important for us to address. I think the inquiry that was made by Counselor Penya was specifically related to an interest in addressing employee pay and an additional 1%. That inquiry is significantly different than the inquiry we received of a request for wiggle room. Not knowing the intent, it's really hard to think about Not knowing the intent, it's really hard to think about the trade-offs of what you, when you're unsure what those will be. Additionally, this was based upon information from the committee sub. And so the line items that are included are related to having last night's version of the committee sub that was provided to us by staff. And as staff indicated, an adjustment made this morning to that was why we didn't have the appropriate line items. But I just want to be clear that the inquiry was very specific, and so our work was to be in a position to work with the counselor related to her intent to present a propose, sorry, an amendment for 4,410,000, which represented 1% pay increase. Again, very different than a general inquiry for additional funds.
Thank you. And I would like to say that you've sent us the budget, and it's, you, now we get to, it's up to us to appropriate the money, so we can make those changes, and you don't have to know the intent of our changes. You've already given us what you wanted, and then now we can go back and make those I will, I'm very disappointed in the last couple of weeks, you even, wouldn't even answer phone calls. It was very frustrating, or texts. I will say that the, I talked, and that is true. I will, I talked, I spoke with the chief, and he asked for technology and for, with the, that DOJ information, that line item. And so that's where we, we already appropriated that in a, for the federal lawyer and the technology for APD. But Counselor Champagne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little, we're bickering back and forth between the administration and stuff, and it's kind of interesting. And people watching probably look at us and say, "Gosh, this is what we come down to." But at the same time, I'm kind of excited, because this is what it's about. It's about discussions and passion and moving forward, and the bickering back and forth is part of getting through this thing. But I find it interesting that you would say that you would work with your budget with an individual counselor and not include the chair of the committee in that conversation. You'll contact her and say, "Well, we want to know specifics," but if an individual counsel, counselor approaches you, you'll work with them individually, but not include or loop in the actual committee of the whole chair. So, and I don't need a response from it. It's more of a statement. Now, I do have a question, though, in reference to this amendment. Section five is going to be deleted completely, and you're okay, CAO, with that amount of 450,000 is hereby reserved for full-time employment positions and operation for the creation of an independent Albuquerque Office of Permitting, which shall coordinate internal permitting functions and timelines across city departments. We just had an argument about getting rid of permanent positions or positions. You're okay with that one, but not with the other two.
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, that item is a committee sub addition, not from our budget. We did not propose this office. This is a council-proposed additional department being added as an independent entity, so therefore, it is not.
So you didn't work together, like you just said, on this amendment? Or just parts of the amendment?
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, I'm not sure I understand your statement. We use the committee sub that was provided by Council Services to us last night.
Yes.
In that council service, in that committee sub, section five was added. We did not send that down. That is not in our proposed budget. It was added by Council Services. So our, when, in looking at the committee sub and looking at the document that was going to be reviewed tonight, we provided the places in which this committee sub, we felt the counselor could identify funding for the 1%.
So, Madam Chair, so number nine of this committee amendment, page three, deleting section five, you didn't work with her on it, or you don't know about it?
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, we proposed it because it came to us from city council in your committee sub. We did not propose that item in our proposed budget.
Okay, then I'm confused in here. Please help me clarify. This is a, this is an amendment that says, "On page three, delete section five." Was that, is this an amendment, or is this a part of, what is, please help me understand this?
It's right down here.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Basson?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I thought you called on me. It's my understanding, from what I, I'm just trying to interject a little bit, but it's my understanding that the committee substitute included section five.
It does.
That was new. It was not proposed by the admin. It was not included in any of that. It was something that the committee chair had added in there. And so that is not an administration thing. Now, I mean, in discussions, maybe they all decided, I can't speak on their behalf, but I know that that was something.
Okay.
Just to point that out, it wasn't in the original budget. It was something the committee of the whole chair added.
And Madam Chair, then this is where my confusion is, because here is an amendment saying remove it. The administration worked with this counselor, with the sponsor, on some of this stuff, professional accountability, chief's administration office, and they were okay with removing this money. Did they not know that she was going to put in section five, or is that something that she was putting in together? Did they not know what section five was, that it was going to be removed as well?
This, you received this last night. This is what she received, same one that everybody else received. Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
We worked today.
Okay.
On the committee sub that we received from Council Services last night. We proposed from the committee sub, location, items that could fund this 1%. So we didn't work from our proposed budget resolution, because we are all now working from the committee sub.
Okay, then.
And that, section five was in the committee sub.
Let me.
So we proposed it as an option for funding the balance needed for the 4,410,000, for an additional 1%.
Madam Chair, then, Dr. Single, are line nine of this proposed committee amendment, are you okay with removing 450,000 in those positions, or that position that it states?
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, we are absolutely, absolutely okay, and we can, are happy to discuss with you all our concerns related to section five. And our director of planning would be happy to discuss the concerns related to that section that was added.
Thank you. Counselor Pena?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I know the counselor chair is a little frustrated, but, you know, being committee of the whole chair, just so that everyone knows, we can, as individual counselors, we can put our amendments forward. We don't have to discuss them with the committee chair. And then we can also, just as committee chair did, and as others did, went to departments, asked departments what they needed, and talked to the administration. So this is nothing out of the ordinary, I just want you to know. And when I went to the administration for this, I actually suggested something that wasn't necessarily palatable for them. So I said, "I am going to do this 1%." And so it's like an option of either, you know, do the 1% and find where you guys can take it out of, and then we'll go from there. And as I mentioned earlier, this does, they were shy, and it shows in Council Services a decrease of 777. That's where I made it up, because I wanted this amendment to be moved forward, because I think it's important for our city workers, because I think there's a huge gap, I don't recall the gap off the top of my head, but there's a huge gap in trying to get in line with that class and comp study. So 1% is just a small fraction of taking from different little areas to try to get even 1% closer to where they need. I mean, we really need to look, I think, at next year's budget and figure out how we're going to, rather than decreases, maybe increases, to look at how we're going to get these folks back to where they need. I mean, they, as you all know, they were the ones that were in the front lines when we had COVID, and they're still doing that same work today. So, and with the, with the decrease of the 777, it was my hope that Monday, we can do an amendment to find some additional dollars to cover most of that.
Okay, is that your close?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Counselors, all those in favor of committee amendment number 10, raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no? No?
No.
Okay, that fails on a six, three, six vote. That was lively. Okay, let's go on to, do you want to do this one next?
Yeah, so the other amendment was, and I had prepared this just in case, but I think this is already in the budget, so I don't think I need it. I'll defer to Mr. Matzko. Just, this is the other one, that the amount of 700,000 is hereby reserved for ask-me green circle positions to increase the minimum wage of their assigned pay range. Subject to negotiations upon the execution of the agreement, the amount is hereby unreserved, and increases will be distributed to the respective departments and programs by the Office of Management and Budget. So this is in there, correct, Mr. Matzko?
Mr. Matzko?
Madam Chair, Vice President Pena, that's correct. Section two of the committee substitute has that language in there, raising the ask-me green circle employees who are below the minimum in the class and comp study. It brings all of them up to the minimum pay.
Perfect. So, Madam Chair, so I will not be moving that amendment since it's in the budget. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, welcome. Counselor Pena?
Amendment number 11. Thank you, Madam Chair. So amendment number 11 is on page three, line 23, entitled Public Library, increase that amount by 50,000. On page seven, line 10, entitled Professional Accountability, decrease that amount by 50,000. On page five, line 22, entitled Mental Health, increase that amount by 900,000. On page five, line 18, entitled Gateway Center, decrease that amount by 900,000. On page five, line 22, entitled Mental Health, increase the amount by 170,000. On page five, line 14, entitled Strategic Support, decrease the amount by 25,000. On page five, line 20, entitled Homeless Support Services, decrease the amount by 145,000. On page seven, after line 28, insert the following, Local Government Abatement Fund 201 Finance Administration Services Department Recovery Housing 214,000. This amendment is needed to correct the necessary technical adjustments to committee sub R25132 by properly aligning appropriations with associated programs. The following subsections detail each adjustment. Item one and two, increase the Arts and Cultural Department, Department's Public Library Program by 50,000, and decrease the Police Department's Professional Accountability Program by 50,000 to ensure the library is not reduced beyond the last fiscal year. Item three and four, reallocate funding of 900,000 within the health, housing, and my, the other side of my amendment is missing. So I think that's, oh, here it is. Homelessness Department Appropriation to Include Non-Recurring Funding for Assisted Outpatient Treatment and Reduce Non-Recurring Funding for Deferred Maintenance at Gateway. Items five, six, and seven, reallocate funding of 170,000 within the Health, Housing and Homelessness Department's Appropriation to Restore Full Funding for the Health Equity Council Contract and Mental Health Program by Reducing Non-Recurring Funding for Life Quest USA by 25,000 within the Strategic Support and Non-Recurring for the Albuquerque Indian Center by 75,000 and Recurring Contractual Services by 70,000 for the Homeless Support Services Program. Item eight, funding to support the Recovery Housing Program for Persons Who Have Completed the Good Shepherd Comprehensive In-House Substance Abuse Recovery of at least six months' duration in line with the established parameters for opioid allocations. Additionally, program-neutral moves include reallocate non-recurring funding of 75,000 for the Arts and Cultural Department's Community Events Program to Opera Southwest and from the contractual services allocation within the same program, reallocate recurring funding from 10,000 in Health, Housing and Homelessness Department Affordable Housing Program to Support New Mexico Legal Aid Contract and the Contractual Services Allocation in the same program. I move approval. I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this amendment does not match the pages, so I can't vote on something that doesn't match the budget. Again, we got it, like, this, this is really, I must say.
So Counselor Pena?
Madam Chair, so I read with the corrected line items, so they should be corrected. So.
Okay.
They are correct? Okay, thank you, they are correct. Our staff is telling us that they are correct.
Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair, Counselor Rogers, while Counselor Pena was reading it out loud, this amendment, she did indicate the correct numbers, and I did note that on the amendments. So I can make that change.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. But for us to follow along, we can't, we don't have it here, we don't have it in our iPads, and again, for the public, they don't have it. This is a very large amendment that the public and we just see on the fly. This is not how we're supposed, this is, I know I'm new here, this is not working. Thank you.
Counselor Basson?
Madam Chair, I appreciate everyone's grace, because this is a lot of moving parts. At first, I agreed at the discomfort of not having the right line items. However, all of the, now with the proper notation read into the record for the proper line items, it still is fundamentally taking it from that line item and that program. So it's still, so I at least, and I, I feel better about that, but I can also understand some of the other opinion.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor, Mr. Matzko, I remember in our conversations on Saturday when we were working on this, that the assisted outpatient treatment was on, we had that in a line item. Mr., Ms. Rummler?
Counselor Chair, when the department presented to the council, we believe that the director pointed out the AOT would be covered by a non-recurring line item for the 900,000. Since we are looking at this for the first time, I'm trying to clarify if it's the same line item.
Say that again.
If it's the same line item.
Okay.
That he told the council was for AOT.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Yes, Counselor Basson?
Madam Chair, I just, Counselor Pena, I believe, is this by request? Is this yours? Okay, so I would like to clarify, because it says in the explanation, "This is necessary to correct technical adjustments by properly aligning the appropriations for associated programs." Madam CAO, can you elaborate a little bit?
Madam Chair and Counselor Basson, I'm happy to have both our budget director, as well as CFO, Sirasau, talk about historically why we have had technical adjustments, and this is in alignment with that. And I want to make sure, any questions you may have about these technical amendments, we want to be able to obviously explain them to you and can do so.
Madam Chair, that explanation would be appreciated, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselors and council staff is right. It was the direct non-recurring that we had it inserted as Gateway, Deferred Maintenance for Gateway. We are now pulling that back out and identifying it as AOT. That's what the 900,000 is.
Madam Chair, and I guess, Madam CAO and Mr. Davis, I'm asking holistically on this amendment, not just about the AOT question. That was somebody else's question, but holistically, why is this necessary? Can you make it clear for myself and those watching?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor Basson, these, and I will say, I wish we were perfect, but the budget office isn't perfect. Sometimes we mess up. Sometimes the administration tells us to do, you know, one thing or the other. We get busy, and we forget to maybe insert things or move things around. So that's what this technical amendment is doing. So in that one line item, we forgot to break it out for AOT and Deferred Maintenance for Gateway, so that's what we're doing here. In addition, making this library whole, and the last one, to make the Health Equity Contract whole. I wish, I wish we would have missed things, Counsel, but budget is.
Thank you. Counselor Feeblecorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I have a question for Madam Chair. Did you see these before the meeting today?
I did not.
So I guess I just have a, an overall process complaint. You know, I think it's pretty well-known that the budget chair would be the person to send these types of things through, and if she chose not to move them, then going to someone else would be acceptable. But I think skirting the budget chair, after all the work that's been done, to take in all of our requests and work so hard on a, on a budget proposal, was disrespectful to not only the Cow Chair, but to all of us that have worked on this budget. I am fine with these amendments. I will support them, but again, I just think that we owe our budget chair a little more respect than that, given the amount of work that's been put into this budget.
Thank you, Counselor Champagne. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It being by request, I guess it's for the budget committee, the cities. Just looking over the increase and decrease and increase and decrease, where is the 214 coming from?
Everything else seems to be accounted for. Counselor Champagne, that is coming from the local government abatement, available fund balance in that fund.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Pena?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I urge your support on this, and again, as committee of the whole chair, technical amendments are passed by a variety of counselors throughout the years. They don't have to specifically go through.
They don't have to specifically go through, it's just a technical adjustment, so, but they historically haven't always gone to the chair, so I'd urge your support.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm just looking at the Rogers, I need to verify. Can you explain the LGE Local Government Abatement Fund? It says Recovery Housing, and it's after lines six?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm happy to explain. This is a addition to insert in an appropriation from the opioid settlement funds. This appropriation meets the guardrails and the guidelines that were set through the resolution that was passed by the council. This adds $214,000 appropriated from that based upon the Good Shepherd Center's ability to double their capacity related to support of individuals for recovery. And this, so just to be very clear, it is the fact that these funds are in addition in, coming from the opioid settlement fund as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all those, all those in favor of this one, raise your hand. Say yes. Yes, opposed? Okay, that passes six, three. Can I see the noes again? All righty, that was fun. All right, let's go on to Amendment Number 12. Counselor Penya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since our, we're numbered at this point, which one are you looking at?
We can help out this one.
Okay, so this one is one that I don't intend to move because I think we accomplished this earlier with another amendment. Just shy a little bit. This is the one for the Route 66 Centennial Celebration. It is on page eight of the Committee Substitute, beginning on line nine. Thank you. Madam Chair, so Committee Amendment Number, what did you say?
This would be 12.
Okay. So this one is my final amendment, and this is on page three of the Committee Substitute, beginning on line one. Delete section four in its entirety as follows and renumber subsequent sections. So there's the deletion, and then on line, on item two, it's on page four of the Committee Substitute, line two. Amend the amount for operating grant fund 265 as follows. Operating Grants Funds 265, delete the 8 million, add 12 million on page nine of the Committee Substitute, line 20. Amend the amount for prepaid rapid rehousing as follows. Prepaid rapid rehousing, increase that, the 4 million to the 8 million. An explanation for this is the proposal to reduce 4 million from the existing 8 million already contracted for permanent supportive housing will have an immediate and devastating consequences. So it has just some information on here, just 1,200 people are housed under the PSH, I hate acronyms. Half will be unhoused with these cuts or everyone. So actually, what this does is with the permanent supportive housing, I mean, we've funded these people, we have to make sure that they're secure and that funding remains there, and I know that it would, you know, we can pause it, but I don't think any kind of moratorium on this money would make landlords happy. I know that there's a lot of people just wanting to have secured housing, and when we passed this, I know there were some questions at one of the, one of the other Cal meetings talking about, you know, all these people coming out and we're just kind of committed to this amount, but this is exactly what the permanent supportive housing means, is that people have that housing until they either no longer need it, or move out, or pass, or whatever. But I think it just destabilizes this program, so.
Is there a second? I move to pass. Second.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to explain, we have, we still have that 8 million dollars. We have, it's not, not appropriated. We have, we appropriated some money, about 6 million dollars several months ago, and the administration hasn't spent it all yet. In our questions, they said they will spend it by the end of this year, and then also, they also have also said in public that they haven't spent it yet. It'll go into the new year. So we are putting 4 million into Fund 265 right away, and the other 4 million is put into reserve. And so when they get finished spending that first chunk of 6 million dollars that we gave them, and this other 4 million that we're putting in Fund 265 for the housing vouchers, then they can, when it gets near the end, when they've got 2.5 million dollars and, you know, and it's getting down there, they can come back to council and say, okay, we're ready for that other. But it's sitting there, it's just not given to them in a lump sum, and it's in reserve for housing vouchers. So I would urge you not to support this.
Counselor Basson?
Madam Chair, so this is, I guess with what I was listening to Counsel Madam Vice President say, it kind of sounded like we were increasing something, but then I'm reading this and it's decreasing something. So can we, we just have another round of clarification, please, whether it's from Counselor Penya, or if she wants to, or from someone else, or?
Counselor Penya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yes, so the money is reserved, but what it really does, though, once you put the money in reserve somewhere else, and then it actually, it funds it later on in the year, so I just think that if we have money for permanent supportive housing, that it should be there, and the confidence for that program should, because it's something that we support it, we fund it, and we have, I think, what is it, like 600 people in that program? Do you guys know off the top of your head? Is it like?
500, 596.
596 people, that this total of 8 million dollars covers for the entire year, and I just feel that putting it on, I don't know, whether you call it reserve, moratorium, or move it until we need it, I just really think that it creates like unstable environment.
Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is for the administration. Is this HUD dollars or these general fund dollars?
Madam Chair, Counselor Rogers, this is the 8 million dollar general fund appropriation for permanent supportive housing, and if I may, I just, I agree with Counselor Penya that we have 1,200 people that are housed in 600 and something households, I just want, or 500 and something households, and I think that's important in this table. I think Counselor Penya asked us as to what that impact looks like. When we talk about executing contracts with the providers that work with these individuals for these permanent supportive housing vouchers, if we don't have the funds appropriated for those contracts, then we, I mean, it's actually illegal for us to extend the total amount to them so that they know those individuals will be housed in those permanent supportive contracts, vouchers for the year. So this kind of puts everyone in limbo as to how, what are we, how many people are we continuing permanent supportive housing vouchers for? Additionally, of course, Dr. Verplu from Health Housing and Homelessness is here for any specifics you would like about the program.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I make that caveat, because just, I think this is what I continue to go back to, processes, processes, processes in this department. And just like the HUD, permanent supportive housing vouchers that we get, it's a formula, we know what we're spending every year, but because contracts are so up and down in this department, we can't even do that as a city. We can't design a formula just like HUD does. So just for people watching, if this was HUD dollars, HUD tells us, this is how many people you're going to house, every year, we're going to make sure you get that amount of money if this was HUD dollars. We as a city cannot be that nimble, because we don't have processes set up to make sure that we're doing these contracts in a timely fashion so that we can plan for this. Now, my question is, is we're just putting it in separate funds. That doesn't mean the funding is not available for the contracts to be executed, if your department does the work to get them executed, which means this body would go and move it to the fund that you need it to be moved to, once you execute those contracts. So this doesn't take the, in my opinion, and I just want to clarify that and ask, have that discussion, because this doesn't take the funding away from housing so that we don't start getting all the emails and the news inquiries that we're anti-housing people. That's not what's happening here. What we're saying is, what I want is better processes so that you're managing these contracts, that's what's causing people to not be housed, is processes. And so I just want to ask that question about this, we're not taking funding away from housing, we're just putting it in different plots, different places, so that you can do the work.
Counselor Penya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, Counselor, I understand the intent of this. I'm very aware of how this works. In terms of processes, I mean, I, we funded a program that I'm sure that they have processes that, processes that they can talk about, but, you know, this is, this will, this will occur next year. Some of us counselors, so if we move 4 million dollars for permanent supportive housing into a different fund, and then next year comes around and some of us counselors aren't here, and this council changes, they may have a different idea of where that money should go, because when it comes back to this body and we reallocate it, they may have an idea of how it gets reallocated. So when I say that it unstabilizes this program, I definitely feel that it unstabilizes this program. I want to be assured that those people, after six months of being in the permanent supportive housing, that they know that they have another six months, and I think that we need to make sure that we accomplish that. So, Madam Chair, Dr. Verplu, if you can answer some of the questions related to processes, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Director, Doctor?
Madam Chair, Counselor Penya and Counselor Rogers, thanks for the questions. I really feel strongly about this one. This is very close to my heart. I feel like this would be a mistake. If you contract out for providers only for six months, it really is a significant burden to them and to us to have to come back and get more money. They, all of their staff, we talked a lot about staff tonight and people having jobs, that all their staff relies on this, so, and all the people that are living in these houses, it's, I'm going to give you the exact number, 596 households, that's 625 people that will be unhoused. So 298 of those households, the half of that will be unhoused if we don't fund this. I understand that you guys are saying that you'll put it into a rapid rehousing fund. The issue with that is that that money's not guaranteed. So this contract goes out, I tell all the providers that we're working with, these eight providers, hey, we're going to contract with you, but just for six months, for half the contract, show me that you're going to have all the people housed that are actually housed, like they are in housing right now. So I feel like this is, really could be significantly detrimental to the program.
Counsel, Mr. Motzko, when we put it in reserve, is it designated for this specific purpose?
Madam Chair, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Champagne?
So with that being said, Madam Chair, with that being said, if you put out a contract, you can put out a one-year contract then, correct? With the information that we have?
Okay.
No, if it's put in reserve, it can only do.
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, the language in here that is being struck says that it shall be appropriated, but it is not appropriated. That is our concern, is that we, when we enter into contracts, the funds have to be appropriated in the budget for us to enter into the contract. So this language specifically says that you're going to appropriate it, so they can't enter a contract until you appropriate it. I just want, like, that is, I'm trying to follow the rules, trying to follow the law.
No, it's understandable.
And we cannot enter into a year-long contract with everyone that equals 8 million dollars, because you have not appropriated 8 million dollars. You intend to do so the other half at some point.
Understandable, Madam Chair.
We don't have any mechanism to guarantee that.
Do you have contracts totaling 8 million dollars right now?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't hear you.
Do you have contracts totaling 8 million dollars right now?
Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, I'd like Dr. Verplu to explain exactly the contracts and the period that we would be contracting.
So, Madam Chair, Counselor Champagne, we have contracts ready to go as soon as the budget's approved. Our intention was to contract for that 8 million dollars. They're already drafted, budget's approved, everything's ready to go as soon as the budget's ready.
Madam Chair and Counselor Champagne, I also add, we have the eight agencies already identified for that funding and that allocation, which would all be affected by this, basically saying we can allocate half a year's funding for half a year's staff. These agencies would have to be notified, that they should prepare for a reduction until the appropriation happens at mid-year, when you all feel that process is ready.
Thank you. Can I, can I ask a question? You keep saying staffing for these contracts. How much of this money is going to staffing?
So Counselor, sorry, Chair Groul, the, last time that we talked, we talked about it being maybe a 70, 30 split. We can break it out by contract if that would be helpful for you to understand, but when we talk about permanent supportive housing vouchers, we're talking about really high-acute people that need support. And so part of the intention behind permanent supportive housing is to give case management to people so that they remain housed. And you had, need administrative costs, you need a fiscal analyst, like, people, agencies need staff to be able to continue to support, so that's part of what goes into these contracts.
Correct, thank you. Can you get us a copy of those contracts that are ready to be executed on July 1, over this, before Monday night? I'd appreciate it if we could see a copy of those.
Yes, Chair.
Yes, and then Counselor Feeblecorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I had a misunderstanding, I think I heard you, but I just want to ask it again. You were saying that you could contract on July 1 for the entire 8 million. How many households would that serve?
That entire 8 million serves 596 households and 1,200 people.
Okay, and they're all ready to go on July 1? There is not some coming on now, and then we will identify more later?
So Chair Groul, Counselor Feeblecorn, that's correct. These clients are in housing now, so if you cut this funding, we will unhouse clients.
Madam Chair and Counselor Feeblecorn, if I can add just the demographics on that, which was provided, 426 of those individuals are under the age of 18, 694 of those individuals are between the ages of 19 and 64, 131 of them are over 60, 65 I should say. So I just want to highlight the impact of populations and the decisions being made for those contracts execution and the limitation that this would put on us being able to ensure that our providers who take care of these folks will have the funding for their case managers and the security they need to make sure they maintain those leases for these individuals.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I have one more. Thank you. And so I just, again, the reason that we can't do half-year contracts is because it just doesn't give the confidence of the providers to be able to continue that service, but there's no, there's no, there's no reason beyond the fact that we want the contractors to know that they have the funding so that they have continuing care for each of those 596 households.
Chair Groul, Counselor Feeblecorn, yes, it's about confidence and trust with providers, and I would say that it's also about ensuring that the way that they go about leasing clients is, they feel confident that they can get into leases with clients if they need to do that, they can re-lease with clients, and they can make sure that those people are like stable and that the staff are in their position. So if you talk to a provider and you say, hey, I'm going to contract with you for six months, and then I have to come back to council, and I need to get this re-appropriated, that takes a lot of time, so, you know, it gives me two months, and then I'm back here again putting this through your process to be able to get approved for these contracts. And so it creates a lot of administrative burden on our side, on the side of the contractors, on the side of the staff, and really on the side of the clients at the end of the day.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair and Counselor Feeblecorn, if I could also add, let's take just a simple example. You've got a client who's going to be up for a new lease in October. They have funding through December while a decision is being made for continuance. There's no guarantee that funding will be there. How do you secure that lease for that individual? So that's just a small example.
Thank you. Ms. Keith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out that the city filed a motion to dismiss the McLendon action on March 31. The McLendon action has 10 requirements. One of them is to provide a certain minimum level of supportive housing units. We emphasized in that motion that we are currently providing those units, and I just want to say that that is a key to our defense in that action.
Very good, thank you for that. Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question. So in the explanation on this amendment, there's eight agencies listed, so it says Albuquerque Healthcare for the Homeless, Barrett Foundation, Good Shepherd Center, Heading Home, New Day Dream Center, and Serenity Mesa. Are those the eight providers?
Are those the eight providers? And so, their contracts are expired June 30th, right? So, where was the RFP? How did you choose these providers, again? I, I get your notifications for RFPs, and I didn't see an RFP for this. So, how did you choose these providers, again?
Chair Grouse, Counselor Rogers, the RFP did go out, and they were selected through that RFP process. I can send you the information on that.
When was the RFP?
Chair Grouse, Counselor Rogers, likely March. I can look at the date.
Yes, I would love to see that. And then, when, when is this council going to get those contracts? Because if they're eight million dollars, eight contracts, they're getting a million each? Or how much are they getting each? Then we should be approving those contracts if they're over, especially if they're a million-dollar contracts.
Chair, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Counselor Rogers, so the social service contracts allow for the amounts and the allocations. We put the RFP out for up-tos, and we also, qualified individuals to say, in should the event we get additional funding from the state or other areas, we could bring on more providers for capacity, so.
So you did an RFQ?
No, RP.
Okay. So, yes, I would love to see those, and when we can expect those contracts to come through here, so that we can be ready to execute them? Because if you're not, if they haven't come to council, you can't execute any of these contracts. So I, I just, I want to see those. And no question needed. Thank you.
Just follow up, Madam Chair, Counselor Rogers, without the funding and allocation, we can't execute those contracts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You do it all the time. We, we've, we've talked to you in front of this dais about contracts that were executed without being appropriated or brought to this council. So, great, we're, we're changing that, and again, it goes back to processes in your department. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I close, I just want to say that, you know, when we were, this program was introduced to us and we were funding it, we said that we wanted to provide a permanent supportive housing, and, and this eight million dollars, I think, should be in the pot for permanent supportive housing. And, and again, it, it's helping almost 600 people, I heard five-something, and then I heard 625, but it's helping, yeah, to, to, to have, to maintain housing. So, anything that we do here, just because we want it to come back to us so we can appropriate it, I would prefer that we appropriate it once, so that we don't have to feel like we have to be the body that is sitting here holding up this money, so that we can get this kind of approval that we said we can appropriate it. We supported this program, and, and I, and the eight million dollars needs to be there so that people can maintain their housing. So, with that, I would urge your support.
Okay. All those in favor of this amendment, Amendment Number 12, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, those no? Okay, that passes 5-4. Okay. Any other amendments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Counselor Lewis.
You, you asked for any other amendments. I, I, I do want to propose another amendment. And it's, and I, and I can read it, staff can pass it out to you, we can put it up on the, on the screen here. So this is on page three.
Madam Chair, point of order, is this something that was, we had?
I'll take a point of privilege then.
No, but Madam Chair, I guess, if I can finish, please?
Madam Chair, it's a point of privilege.
Madam Chair, if I can finish, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is in the council rules that any budget and monetary amendments must be on the dais distributed to all counselors by 5:00 PM or the start of the meeting. I'm happy to ask Counselor, Mr. Morrow to clarify if you would like Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Morrow.
Sorry, Madam Chair, Counselor Hassan, that, Counselor Hassan is correct, that that is in council rules. However, council does have the opportunity to move for a suspension of the rules if, if they would be so inclined.
Okay. Mr. Morrow, how many votes do we need to suspend the rules?
Council Chair, you would need six votes. This is been the rules, see here a motion.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Rogers, you have a question?
So, no, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm going to ask for a point of privilege.
Okay. Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question, because we, we went through amendments that were not on the dais at 5:00 already. So I just want to make sure that we're being clear on the rules for everybody.
They weren't distributed. They weren't distributed, but they were sitting on the desk, they were sitting up there. Okay. Counselor Lewis.
So, Madam Chair, I could have saved all of us that conversation, because I know the rules, and asking for a point of privilege, and if we want to call for us, I'd like to explain an amendment with a point of privilege, and then if you want to call for a suspension of the rules, then we can do that.
Okay. Counselor.
It's pretty simple. So, thank you, Madam Chair. So this would be to, on page line, on page three, line 26, entitled, Chief Administrative Office to Reduce the Amount by $99,000. On page seven, line 10, entitled Professional Accountability, Reduce Amount by 1.2 Million. On page six, after line 22, insert the following, the daily golf greens fee will be reduced by $1. On page six, after line 28, insert the following, the daily admission fees for the aquatics program shall be reduced by 50 cents per person in each of the following categories, adult, teen, child, water, aerobics, therapy, spectator, and Friday night special entry. And because some of the money allocated here would need to, you know, also coincide with some ordinance change, including the food truck and restaurants, so in explanation, this amendment reduces appropriations for the Chief Administrative Office and APD Professional Accountability to offset anticipated revenue decrease resulting from a $1 reduction in golf greens fees, and a 50 cent reduction in daily admission fees for the aquatics program. It also accounts for a 10% reduction in restaurant inspection permit fees, excluding mobile unit inspection fees, which shall be reduced by 50%. These fee changes are contingent upon a future amendment to the food and beverage ordinance to formalize the reductions. The combined estimated revenue impacts approximately 266,000. So in, in this amendment, the, the 1.2 million dollars that the, that the mayor's office, the administration was, was really willing to just give up, and as well as the, the chief administrative office's $99,000 that she was willing to, that she didn't need, we could, we could allocate it, you know, toward this. Madam Chair, I'll, I'll introduce it Monday night. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, no more amendments, we're good. Let's see, we have a committee sub with amended amendments on it, and I would like to, first of all, I just want to just say a few things about our, our committee sub, and I want to thank, I want to thank my fellow counselors for working with me over the last two months. It has been a privilege to work with you all. I, I really enjoy the conversation, and I think that we did, with what we were given, we did a very good job with what we were given. This committee sub doesn't, didn't change a lot. This is the mayor's budget, but we made some changes so that the counselors, knowing what they need in their areas and what their constituents ask for, is there. I also think we brought those Green Circle employees from the class and comp study that the administration did, those were important, that those were included. I think we have some more work to do. We also brought library budget numbers up to 450,000. We've, and we, we were only given 12,000 in the fund balance to, to figure out how to do it. So creatively, I think we did a good job. I want to thank the budget staff for everything that they did to work with all of us. It was hard, it wasn't easy, but we were, we were on our own, and I think we did a good job. So, with this committee sub, I think that we'll still make some more changes on Monday, but I would like to bring it forward to vote on Monday, have more discussion, and then know that when we're done, it will be a budget that works well for the entire city, serves all of us, and I know, I know we all want to work and do the best for all, all of the citizens in Albuquerque. So with that, I urge your support to pass committee sub with amendments. And I'm going to close. Okay, Counselor Penya? I'm sorry. Okay. Counselor Penya.
I, I just wanted to make a comment that I intend on Monday to bring back the 1% across the board for the cost of living, so.
Thank you. And Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, we're going to vote on the bill and, or the motion, and so it's time for some, some comments, so, like, we're, we're going to, I mean, you know, this is a budget that if we pass it Monday night, it's going to work just as the budget did last year. You know, we have to balance a budget, so the mayor, you know, presents a balanced budget, and the council, as we did tonight, and this amendment, and I appreciate the chair's work and everybody else, and, but, you know, we amended this by a small fraction, you know, maybe a percentage point, or, I mean, it's a small fraction. I mean, this is the mayor's budget, and, you know, it has, it has cuts across the board to personnel, it's got, doesn't have a vision in it, doesn't have a vision of really hiring people, and, you know, honestly, frankly, I was very disappointed, and, and good people, our directors and people, you know, good people, but not a lot of vision, you know, for changing anything and, and really resolving and solving, you know, the issues of this city. So, the council holds the purse strings supposedly, and, and we give the administration the entire purse, and probably Monday night, we're going to hand them the entire purse again with everything they asked for. And we did that last year, and so, the, the mayor has everything he asked for from this council. Even when they, they include cuts in their proposal, you know, this, this council gives you guys everything you asked for, and more. And, 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 you know, the mayor has nothing to show for it. We, our homelessness is, is higher than ever, very small reductions in crime, if any, people don't feel that. And we, we spend every dime of, of the taxpayer dollars. So, I wouldn't call this a good budget, I would say great work from our chair, and, you know, I mean, making a, you know, good effort to try to make it better. It's a small fraction of a change from what the mayor proposed. He spent all our money, and we're going to, we're going to give him all of it, I'm sure. And, and there's, and there's nothing to show for it. So I guess the only hope I can say is if it, if it, if it works, then we're going to see a reduction, we're going to see a reduction in homelessness in our city, we're going to see some drastic reductions in crime, we're going to see our, our city get cleaner, we're going to have a better quality of life, and our people are going to feel it. So that, that's, that's, that's what will happen with a budget that works. But, you know, I'm doubtful about it, because it didn't work last year, didn't work the year before, the last eight years. But, you know, these are small tweaks, even the proposals and amendments that, that I and others made tonight, I mean, they were just such a fraction. Even, even the, the idea of giving a little bit of money back, making it a little bit less expensive for people to, our services is just absolutely out of the question. You know, it starts with the mayor. I could tell you that in, in budgets passed, that we didn't spend all the money that, that we thought we were going to get, you know? There have been times when we spent $30 million less, and we were able to have fund balances that were actually practical, and we're actually, many years, were able to use that money to bond for capital, for capital projects. But that's what's, that's what happens when you're fiscally responsible. When you're not fiscally responsible, you spend every bit of money, year over year, all the increases and increases by 100 millions of dollars. That's why we have a budget right now, that's, you know, what, 800 million dollars more than it was eight years ago? And you have a bloated mayor's staff, a bloated CEO's office, they hire everybody they want to, and more, they've doubled in size, the chief's brass has doubled in size, our officers have remained the same, they're on the streets, they're gone lower. I mean, these are just the facts of, of this, and, and again, you know, you know, the, these discussions are incredibly important, because we're the ones who ultimately make these decisions, and, 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 you know, we, we ultimately make the decisions that are exactly what the mayor proposes. And so, what it does do, though, is that, again, the mayor gets everything he asks for, and at some point, we need to see some results. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rogers, and then we'll close.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm glad that Counselor Penya wants to bring back that, because I think we need us, we need to find solutions to make sure folks that work here get paid more. So I didn't vote against it, because I don't want to increase pay, I just want us to be able to understand what we're doing, and I would love to work together on that, because we need to get it right. And it's not, I just, I have to say that, we, I expect that we get these things right, especially when it comes to people's pay, and I think we need to, as a body, figure that out before Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, counselors. So with that, I'm going to say I urge your support for committee sub at 132 as amended. All those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. Raise your hand, yes? Those opposed?
Madam Chair, I just wanted clarification on the motion, because you said for a due pass.
We're moving it out of committee, so we want to pass it out of, out of, oh, a due pass, out of committee, okay.
Okay.
Okay. I move a due pass out of committee, council, committee sub, R 132 as amended. All those in favor, say yes and raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay. Two, seven. Okay. Now, all right, so that passes on a 7-2 vote. Okay, now I would like to move an immediate action. Need a second? Okay, Counselor Rogers, second. All those in favor of immediate actions, say yes and raise your hand. Yes? Okay. Everybody, did everybody raise their hand? Okay, we're good. All right. So that, you said no for immediate action? Okay. All right, so that fails on an 8-1 vote. All right, we will now, oh, one, no, 8-1. It passes. Oh, it, but it failed on an 8-1. Yes. All right. We will now move on to agenda item, R 153. R 153 establishes a one-year objectives for the City of Albuquerque in fiscal year 2026. To meet fiscal year goals, I move a due pass. Okay, we have an amendment to offer. Do I need to do a pass it first? Okay. All right. Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So on page nine, after line six, insert the following new objective, objective two, to meet the goal of well-maintained infrastructure, conduct research into best management practice for administration of construction projects. Research shall include management of price increases such as inflation, with the intent of better completing projects and timely, timely and efficiently report on the steps taken to meet this objective by the end of the second quarter FY '26. Department of Municipal Development, and this directs the Department of Municipal Development to conduct a study into the best management practices for administering, administering construction, construction projects.
Okay. Is there, Counselor Rogers, seconds the motion for the amendment? Any discussion? All right. Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would wonder if the sponsor would entertain a friendly amendment to add and tariffs with the inflation, because I just think that that's something we should be looking at as well.
Can I respond, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So really, the intent of this is to really look at some of the, you know, not the processes within, so maybe it's, it's not worded as well, so maybe I should be clearer on what the intent of it is, is that it's, you know, I know they do a really good job at DMD, they have so many projects going, but my main concern is, is that, that we have just these ever-increasing costs, and it, it's my hope that, I use the example of Mayor Chavez, during his administration, we had medians that neighborhoods were looking at, this was before I was in office, but we had medians that neighborhoods were looking at, and each median would have to go back to the community, would have to go back to RFP, would have to, you know, for every single median in the City of Albuquerque. So I remember with the administration, the mayor did at that time, Mayor Chavez did at that time, is he kind of looked at that and knew that, you know, medians are, are important to our city. So he ended up working and doing, and I'm sure Patmentoy is very familiar with this, looking at how we curb costs, so that when we went out to do a median, it would be that the, I think he said a template on what medians would look like, what trees would go in, so people could just select, and it really reduced the cost. so people could just select, and it really reduced the cost of putting new medians in the city of Albuquerque. And that's actually how we got a lot of them funded after that. So my hope is, is that because, as Counselor Basson's pool, I mean, I've been in the news for the ever-increasing cost of the visitor's center, but it was because every time I turned around, it went up another million dollars. So how do we really look at that and, and, and really determine how we can kind of curb those costs or have something internally where we can ensure that sometimes the developers maybe, you know, are, a better process? I'll just say that. And I think Mr. Matois knows exactly what I'm talking about, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So was that a yes or a no to adding tariffs to the amendment?
I mean, I, I don't think tariffs is, I, I don't think it's necessary.
Thank you, I, thank you, Counselor Baca, please.
Counselor Baca?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually got an invoice today where they put tariffs into it, and then increased the cost by about 10%. Might actually be worth putting it in.
Madam, Madam Chair, so, we can put tariffs in there if you want. It's just that right now, with the tariffs, they're, they're there, they're not there, they're there, they're not there. I mean, sure, we can add tariffs.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I think that's, that's exactly my point, is we don't know, and it's all over the place, and it's hard for us to plan projects if we don't have some idea, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
And, Madam Chair, and so, the tariffs may not be around forever, so that was the intention with this objective, is that, you know, if we put the tariffs in, and this is going to be legislation that, that is in stone, if you will. Anyway, I'm, I'm fine with the tariffs, fine.
So where would it go?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I would just insert the word tariffs after inflation.
I would insert this word tariff after inflation.
Okay. All right. So who seconded it? Would you agree with that?
I absolutely would, thank you.
Okay, all righty. Thank you, okay. All those in favor of this committee amendment, number A, letter A? Raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
One, two, three, four? And those opposed?
And that's why I didn't put tariffs in.
Okay, that fails on a 1/2. Okay, all right, so, um, okay. Now, any discussion on these objectives? I think that they're, I think all of these objectives are very thoughtful, I think they're important. I, I look forward to getting the reports and learning and seeing that the things that we're doing in the city are working, that's what we want. And we just need to know that the money that we're appropriating is working as intended. So with that, I would move, um, to, for Pat, or move for a do-pass for R153. All those in favor, say yes, and raise your hand. I'm, okay.
Madam Chair, the motion on the floor would be a do-pass as amended.
But it wasn't amended. Didn't, it didn't get amended.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, so I move a do-pass, move a do-pass for R173. Okay, all those in favor, say yes, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Those opposed, say no? All right, so I didn't get that count. Did you get the count? Okay. All right, now I move for immediate action. And I need a second. Okay, all those in favor, say yes, and raise your hand. Okay, opposed? Okay, so that fails too. All right, with no other business, this meeting is adjourned.